Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Cable Cast Public Hearing on the Budget Participation Part of our Bill. We welcome you to this public hearing on the annual tax budget and participation meeting. Wes, the clerk, could please call the agenda item?
Bill 2152, Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public's Business of the City and for Meeting the Debt Charges Thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2022. Bill Number 2153, Resolution Fixing the Number of Officers and Employees of the City for the 2022 Fiscal Year and the Rate of Compensation Thereof in Setting Maximum Levels for Designated Positions. Bill Number 2154, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget in the 2022 CDBG Program and the 2022 Through 2027 Capital Improvement Program. Bill Number 2168, Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for 2022 Pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code. Bill Number 2169, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title to Fiscal Article 9 Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Real Property Tax and Exemption by Fixing the Rate of Reals Estate Taxation for 2022. Bill Number 2170, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title to Fiscal Article 9 Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Real Property Tax and Exemption, Section 26302, Payment Options, Discount and Delinquency Penalties, so as to set the payment, discount, and delinquent dates for the 2022 fiscal year. Bill Number 2171, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title to Fiscal Article 7, Business Related Taxes, Chapter 246, Home Rule Tax, Section 24603, Declaration and Payment of Tax at Subsection D, so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent home rule tax for the year 2022. Bill Number 2172, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title to Fiscal Article 7, Business Related Taxes, Chapter 245, Earned Income Tax, Section 24503, Declaration and Payment of Tax at Subsection D, so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent earned income tax for the year 2022.
Thank you very much. I'm Reverend Ricky Burgess, City Council President Pro Tem. Although we are recording this and other members can see you remotely, there are some that will be joining us. Corey and Councilman Lovell are already, Councilman Cora Connor and Daniel Lovell are already on. Other members will be coming with us from time to time periodically. Now we will move to testimony for registered speakers. Once your name is called, please state your full name and address for the public record. Each speaker will have three minutes to address council. If you do not register in advance, we will have testimony after we exhaust the list of registered speakers. Non-registered speakers will receive one minute. Please keep in mind, this is an opportunity for council to speak, for a community rather, to speak directly to Pittsburgh City Council about the issues at hand. And then time for council to listen. Therefore, council will not be responding to individual comments, but we may say something at the end of the meeting. All right. Thank you very much. That moves us to our first speaker. Our first registered speaker is Chris Rosselot.
Yes, good morning, council. My name is Chris Rossello. I am the Director of Policy at Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group and a resident of the Spring Garden Neighborhood in the North Side. PCRG is a coalition of neighborhood organizations dedicated to promoting economic justice, including in the areas of affordable housing and responsible land use. After reviewing the proposed 2022 budget and listening to testimony from department heads throughout these budget hearings, PCRG is appreciative of the hard work that council and their staff and city departments have done by putting together a budget process that emphasizes public input and prioritizes neighborhood needs. As this body knows, budgets are mission statements and a testimony of the policy priorities and level of investment the city wants to make for its residents. PCRG applauds most of the elements in this budget. I do want to take this opportunity to highlight a few budget items of particular interest. First, our members have called for an increase in the neighborhood economic development funding from $500,000 to no less than the pre-pandemic level of $700,000, which would ensure equitable allocation across Pittsburgh's most disadvantaged communities. These funds are also critical to our members, especially ones without staff capacity of some of our larger RCOs in the city. The other item I want to comment on is the Pittsburgh Land Bank. PCRG welcomes the $10 million investment in the land bank through the American Rescue Plan. It is our hope that the PLB Board, many of whose members sit on this council, will work with PCRG during their strategic plan as they gear up to spend this investment. And second, our neighborhood partners hope to work with you and the URA to create a dedicated long-term funding plan for the PLB. Thank you again for your time, and PCRG looks forward to working with you and the new administration in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Lisa Scales. Lisa, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Scales, President and CEO of Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. Our warehouse and offices are located at 1 North Linden Street in Duquesne. We have a network of more than 150 City of Pittsburgh-based agencies serving thousands of Pittsburgh residents. We also serve Pittsburghers directly through our monthly drive-up distributions, of which we have held 27 since the start of the pandemic at 10 different locations. I would like to express my appreciation, and that of all food bank stakeholders, for this council's longstanding support to help us fulfill our mission to feed people in need and mobilize our community to eliminate hunger. This council has allocated community development block grant funds to the food bank for many years, and the additional support provided in 2020 due to the pandemic is very much appreciated. For 2022, the food bank respectfully requests a CDBG allocation of 150,000. These funds will be used to support the work of city-based food assistance providers with the greatest need. Money on account extended to these providers will allow us to reach residents in Pittsburgh's low-income neighborhoods with vital nutritional assistance which might not otherwise be available. One in five Pittsburghers experience food insecurity, meaning that a fifth of the city's population is limited by economic and social conditions that affect their ability to access adequate and nutritious food. Food insecure people often are unable to afford food and may also experience barriers to physically accessing food. Food insecurity has serious repercussions for people throughout their lifespan. It increases health problems among children and seniors and also decreases productivity for working-age adults. It often forces hungry Pittsburghers to choose between paying for food and other essentials such as rent, heat, and medicine. Food insecurity is a significant problem with severe impacts, and we don't expect city government to assume complete responsibility for its solution. That's why the food bank engages individuals, businesses, nonprofits, and foundations in support of our efforts. We also work with state and federal government to maximize the benefits of anti-hunger programs. What we ask of you is your continued commitment to do what you can through the CDBG program to address hunger in Pittsburgh. We recognize the hard choices council must make to allocate scarce resources. We and the people we serve appreciate what you have done in past years under difficult circumstances. The food bank, our food pantries, and partners throughout the city, and the thousands of Pittsburghers challenged by hunger still need your help and support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Colin, and I may pronounce your name wrong, Beck McWhorter?
Yes, that's correct. Colin McWhorter, yep.
Okay, thanks. Good for me.
All right. Good morning. I'm Colin McWhorter from the Community Human Services Food Pantry in South Oakland, and I'm a resident of Morningside. I'd like to thank for the opportunity to speak today about the importance of the community development block grant funding to food pantries like ours and how it impacts the families we serve. Each month, we serve around 400 families at our Long Street Food Pantry in South Oakland, and this time of year, we see an increase from that as more families look for food resources around the holidays when they are celebrating with their loved ones. One of the main goals of our pantry is to offer choices to families when they shop with us. We strive to have a multitude of fresh produce options as well as protein and dairy options. Having choice in what they select adds dignity to the shopping experience and reduces waste as families choose the options that they really want. We love to see the excitement families have when they shop with us and see the selection that they can choose from. The support for our pantry allows us to serve families with a legitimate shopping experience not far off from going to a grocery store. In order to offer choices to families, we rely on grant funding and donations. Without the support of funding through the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank, including the community development block grant, we would be unable to operate and bring these choices to the community. We would be unable to offer families the culturally competent resources they deserve. We hear from families we serve repeatedly that they keep coming back to our food pantry when they are struggling because of the options we have. The fresh produce and protein options we can provide through this support changes the dynamic of a family meal. Instead of preparing a meal with shelf-stable options, families can serve something fresh and nutritious without incurring the high price of fresh produce that a grocery store would have. We serve a community in Oakland that does not have easy access to affordable fresh food, but we are also open to the entire city of Pittsburgh, which covers a vast array of people who may be food insecure at different points throughout the year. We see both young and old families at our pantry as food insecurity can hit a family at any time. As we've seen in the past year, unexpected changes can result in families looking for support they never thought they would need. Pantries like CHS's are here to support the families in our community and give them the choice they deserve, and we're thankful to the City of Pittsburgh and the food bank for that continued support needed to achieve this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Joshua Murphy.
Thank you for having me. I'm Josh Murphy. I'm a resident of Hazelwood, and I'm Director of Sourcing for Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. That means my team oversees solicitation and purchase of all the food we distribute in our 11-county region, including the 62 city Pittsburgh sites that are eligible for this CDBG funding. I've also been employed in various roles at the food banks since 2008, which was just before the start of the Great Recession, including overseeing our produce-to-people program for over a decade, which had four sites in Pittsburgh. And so I've seen firsthand the impact of CDBG funding on our Pittsburgh neighbors who are experiencing some temporary need for food assistance. People who are willing to line up in the cold, crowds of 800 or more, sometimes in the South Side, sometimes in Homewood, in order to be able to put food on the table for their families, their kids, their senior parents, spouses, veterans with disabilities. I've heard their stories and I've seen the impact that this funding makes. CDBG funding helps us and our member agencies to augment donated foods that we rescue from retail stores, farms, shippers, and distributors with high-value purchased items that are sought by the people we serve: meats, dairy products, and shelf-stable pantry items like pasta beans and peanut butter. I heard produce mentioned earlier. We spend, we're going to spend about $1 million this year on sourcing produce for our people's need as well. In a typical year, we purchase about a third of the food that we distribute, with about a third of our food being donated and another third being government commodities, usually from USDA. Of course, last year, the amount that we spent to buy food about tripled from previous years as increased demand from the pandemic, and increased demand for pre-packed shelf-stable boxes so we could facilitate those no-touch drive-through distributions. And supply chain issues that everyone heard about, of course, manufacturer processor shutdowns, the docks being closed, shortfalls in trucking. We could not have kept up with those increases in both demand and price over this year and last without our government allies keeping pace to extend additional funds to us. And we are more grateful than ever for the support of the City of Pittsburgh with the CDBG funding received over these past two years. As we continue to see price increases and supply shortfalls, we appreciate your continued support and look forward to continuing to ensure that our neighbors in Pittsburgh don't go to bed hungry. Thank you for your time and happy holidays.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Erin Spangler.
Yes, good morning. My name is Erin Spangler. I live in Highland Park in City Council, District 7. I am a nutritionist at Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. Thank you for allowing me to comment in support of the city's continued funding of community development block grants that help support the mission and vision of Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank and its partners in the City of Pittsburgh. The food bank and its partners use CDBG funding to source a wide variety of high-value foods. The people we serve consistently request fresh and nutritious foods, including fruits, vegetables, milk, meat, and eggs. These foods are considered high-value because they have high nutritional value, but also because they generally cost more at local stores and because they may be hard to find in many neighborhoods. We know that health and well-being can be predicted by a variety of factors, including access to healthcare, individual health behaviors, and even our own family history. However, social factors, including education, employment and income level, access to transportation, and even where we live, have the most significant impact on health and well-being. These factors are known as the social determinants of health. People experiencing food insecurity are more likely to have negative health outcomes related to the social determinants of health. Organizations like the food bank and its partners can redress this inequity and ensure that all people experiencing food insecurity have access to healthy food. CDBG funding helps us do that. In March 2020, the food bank launched the Stakeholder Engagement Initiative to engage the community in discussions about how we can make our work even more effective. Through this initiative, I've had the opportunity to speak with hundreds of stakeholders across our entire service area, including regional leaders, government officials, volunteers, donors, our nonprofit partners, and most importantly, the people we serve. There was strong consensus across all stakeholder groups that the food bank must continue to prioritize the distribution of healthy foods that better reflect the dietary and cultural needs of individuals and communities. CDBG funding from the City of Pittsburgh helps the food bank and its partners support the overall wellness of Pittsburghers by improving resource access to the high-value foods the people we serve want and need. In closing, I'd like to thank you for your time, your consideration, and for all the support you have provided to the food bank and the Pittsburghers that we serve every day.
Thank you very much. Joanna Demming.
Hello, my name is Joanna Demming. I am the Executive Director of Fineview and Perry Hilltop Citizens Council and a resident of Perry Hilltop. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you. Yeah, so I wanted to thank the council and the mayor's office for investing in affordable housing, and I'm looking forward to discussing ways to increasing funding to address the shortage of affordable homes and preventing displacement. It's great to see an investment in the land bank and looking forward to looking for a long-term funding solution and plan for the land bank. We're so grateful for NED funds to support communities like ours with the history of disinvestment and racist policies such as redlining, particularly communities of color. But the overall NED funding pot needs to be increased to serve more communities and create a deeper, long-lasting impact. Other community priorities include recreation centers for youth, mental health programming, including violence prevention and trauma, sidewalk improvement. I'd like to see a systematic block-by-block approach. Paving, we'll have some streets for the spring, Quincy Way, Suffolk and Lanark Streets, and biking infrastructure, additional bike lanes, bike rental stations up on the hilltop, and other opportunities for biking. So those are my comments. Thank you so much and have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you very much. We are joined by council members Erica Strasburger, Anthony Cockhill, Bobby Wilson, and Deborah Gross. Good morning. Good to see the members. That takes us to Dawn Plummer.
Good morning. My name is Dawn Plummer. I live in Point Breeze in District 9 and serve as Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council. The Food Policy Council's a network of over 100 organizations from across the food system, including farmers, impacted and concerned residents, emergency food providers, restaurant owners and workers, anti-hunger advocates, universities, policy experts, food retailers, cooperatives, and many others who work together in our region to bring healthy food into our communities. Together, we work to build a just, equitable, and sustainable food system. I wanted first this morning to thank city council for your ongoing work and dedication to food initiatives. As we've heard already this morning, this includes ongoing investments of CDBG funds in the city's emergency food distribution network and pantries. I'd also like to thank city council for your commitment to going even further, to helping develop robust community food systems to create food-secure communities across the city. A special thanks to, I wanted to share a special thanks with Councilwoman Kail Smith for her leadership in calling for a public food coordination task force to develop further recommendations for food systems coordination and investment across the city of Pittsburgh, as well as thanks to Councilwoman Gross for chairing that task force and Councilman Burgess, Kraus, and O'Connor for their ongoing work. While we know federal and county governments are largely tasked with meeting the human and social needs of Pittsburgh residents, there are significant ways that cities like Pittsburgh can develop coordinated cross-departmental strategies to improve local food systems and invest in their development. For this reason, over the summer, we developed a proposal that called for the establishment of a Pittsburgh Food Justice Fund that would expand the city's investments into food systems through the creation of a $10 million fund over four years for inclusion in the American Rescue Plan, Spending, Spanning Plan. Throughout the fall, we've been meeting individually with many of you to understand how best to establish such a fund and deepen coordination with the city on food initiatives. From farms to restaurants and food processing to managing food waste, food systems can be a major economic driver for our region. Leadership and commitment from the city in this area can leverage existing city assets, create jobs, raise wages, and strengthen city communities. A food justice fund would increase our city's ability to produce food, support food businesses and workers, and uplift community-led solutions to food security, particularly in communities that the city's Feed Pittsburgh reports defines as healthy food priority areas. Healthy food priority areas are identified by their levels of high household poverty and diet-related chronic disease and low rates of vehicle ownership and low rates of fresh food store walkability. These Pittsburgh communities are places of highest need and require focused, coordinated effort and investment. While it's, of course, disappointing to not have yet had the inclusion of the Food Justice Fund in this year's budget, we remain committed to working with each of you to determine the best path forward for this fund, because the needs remain and the potential impact of investment and increased coordination with city partners remains great. We envision Pittsburgh City Council and administration working in deep partnership with the Food Policy Council, community and business leaders and others in order to promote food equity in Pittsburgh. Coordinated investments in communities of great need would yield increased food production, affordability, and availability by investing in strategies that are laid out in existing community plans and the regional plan, including the Greater Pittsburgh.
Thank you very much. Three minutes goes fast, goes by very fast. Our next speaker, and again, I may mispronounce your name, is Raqueeb Bayajuma August Burrow.
Thank you, Councilman Reverend Burgess. It was a great try. I struggled with it at first, too. It's Ajamu Saburu. I'm Raqueeb Bay, a resident of Homewood, and I'm the founder and executive director of the Black Urban Gardeners and Farmers of Pittsburgh Co-op. Thank you, city, excuse me, and I'm also a shade tree commissioner for the City of Pittsburgh. Thank you, Mayor Perdido, and city council for that. Thank you for hearing me, city council, and those of you all who have been working to end food insecurity in our homes and food apartheid in our area. Special thanks to Councilwoman Deb Gross and Teresa Kail Smith for creating this task force. You hear the words "food desert" and you hear the word "food apartheid", I'm partnering Healthy Choice Community. We are attentive about our words, and we say "food apartheid" because it's more than a lack of a grocery store. It's very few healthy options in black and brown communities and low-income communities. Food apartheid also points to the discrimination of communities of black and brown people when it comes to economic opportunities. We call it what it is. What we've done at BUGS is create a green print for food access to these food apartheided communities, such as forming the Homewood Food Access Working Group in 2018, the Hill District Food Access Working Group. We have partners from Hazelwood and Bell Super who are mirroring our green print to end food apartheid in our community. Please consider what my colleague Dawn Plummer from the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council just stated to you all, that $10 million laid out by the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council and other groups such as the Black Urban Gardeners. This fund will provide funding to support necessary investments in our local food system, regardless of all the hard work we've done. This, our food system is broken, and the wheel needs repair on it. I would just say that amendments to reflect black and brown communities where food apartheid is higher than ever and organizations like BUGS and others have been boots on the ground, lessening the trauma of food apartheid in our community. Without a doubt, large-scale investments for cooperative grocery stores that we are creating in Homewood, called, it's named Freedom Foods after Reverend Eugene Freedom Blackwell, is paramount. We've been without a grocery store since 1995, and we have 22 advisory committees, members made up of Homewood residents, farmers, cooperative experts, food justice activists, and stakeholders. And we are asking that funds do put aside for this, this plan to make food apartheid finally end in Pittsburgh. I understand that this task force has been created, and we're grateful for that, but we also want to include in this task force members of another organization that has been doing this work, boots on the ground, to eliminate food apartheid in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing up the name of Eugene Freedom Blackwell, who was my friend. That takes us to Elena Gomez. Are you with me, Elena? Last call, Elena Gomez. We'll come back to you later. Next is Charmaine Moy. Ms. Moy, are you with us? Second call, Charmaine Moy. Ms. Moy, are you with us? Seeing no Ms. Moy, we'll go on to Xena Scott. Ms. Scott, are you with us?
Good morning, council. My name is Xena Scott. I've been a Homewood resident for over 50 years. I have served in the last six months as part of the Pittsburgh Food Equity Ambassador Program. I am coming to you this morning as a concerned resident of the city and as an ambassador in that program. That program has set up suggestions and amendments that we'd like to give to council, and that will be presented at a later date. This morning, I am coming to you with the concern of black and brown communities throughout the city of Pittsburgh that have been underserved for decades. It has showed in our streets lack of paving and the land use by the city and URA with the lack of cutting of grasses and obtaining or maintaining empty structures. It also showed up very strongly in the pandemic with the lack of food, healthcare, and basic testing for these communities. Thanks to the city, communities, companies, churches, and nonprofits who came to our aid at a very high rate, but it should not have been that way. We should have had equal, if not better, services from the city in order to maintain our health and not be in the position and condition that our communities are in. I ask again, in showing the concern for black and brown communities, that the budget be adjusted for the needs of the insecurity of food in this community. Reverend Burgess, I commend you for the work you've done with Giant Eagle, but as you know, Giant Eagle is a big business. But as you know, Giant Eagle is a big business and they're out to make money. Also too, when you put gigos into different communities, if you look at the historical uh, outcome, they have put many small businesses out of work, have closed them down. I am a part of Raqueeb's program also. We are in the process of working very hard. We're trying to get a co-op grocery store into Homewood so the people of Homewood can have access to fresh fruits and vegetables and foods that are healthy for their children and themselves. I thank you all for allowing me to speak this morning and have a good day.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Maria Cohen. Maria Cohen. Ms. Gomez, if you can hear me, um, you have an older version of Zoom. If you would go into a different a device or up or download a newer version of Zoom, either one of those will get you into our meeting. Um, that takes us, uh, no Maria Cohen, that takes us to Jennifer Lyons. Jennifer, are you with us?
I am, hello.
Hello.
Uh, my name is Jennifer. I've been a resident of Pittsburgh for the past 10 years and I live in the neighborhood of Friendship. Um, I was recently engaged. I'm looking to buy a house and I really wish I was calling into this city budget meeting to talk about things like property taxes. However, I'm uh, and unfortunately, my neighbors are dealing with something much more somber. See, Friendship is the neighborhood in which uh, Jim Rogers was recently murdered. I actually live only a few blocks away from where that happened. Jim Rogers was a black man who was tased to death and denied medical care. His only crime seeming to be that he was riding a bike. And uh, there is really realistically no justice that's going to be able to be served for Mr. Rogers. Uh, his life is not going to be able to restored, but to add uh, insult to injury is the way that the uh, current Pittsburgh, proposed Pittsburgh budget is rewarding the Pittsburgh City Police uh, for their really years of inaction. Um, we've heard from other speakers that one in five Pittsburghers face food insecurity and yet we are supposed to accept that one in every $5 that we're paying to our taxes is going to the Pittsburgh Police. And I want to understand how an institution that has failed so spectacularly and so repeatedly uh, is still getting this much of our city's budget. And likewise, how is an institution that is so thoroughly rejected, what it claims to be its purpose uh, is able to year after year demand and receive even more money? Are they running out? Are they still trying to financially recover from the tear gas that they used against protesters? And so I would urge you all, if you want to truly make this city safe, uh, I urge you to invest in communities, in their health, their housing and their education, and not in the racist institution that is threatening their very lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, that takes us, I believe, to Matthew Rubin.
Well, uh, thank you. My name is Matthew Rubin. I live in Beachview and um, I want to, you know, ask this council to think seriously about what the budget that you're passing is. A budget is a moral document. It uh, it, you know, lays out the ethics of our city, and I think that the ethics laid out by this budget are atrocious. I think that this budget, that this council needs to think seriously about actually passing some amendments on this budget for once, not just rubber stamping Mayor Pududo. Uh, we need to take steps to reduce the funds that we're putting towards our police force. Uh, nearly doubling the uh, police budget in the past eight years is not a good direction to go in for many of the reasons that have been stated. Um, and we can use those resources to actually help people in need and to make our community safer. We can fund uh, housing and legal assistance for people in need. With unprecedented levels of evictions, Pittsburgh must put far more resources for rental assistance into legal aid for renters who are threatened with eviction uh, and into housing unhoused. We need to fund feeding people in need. The city of Pittsburgh can actually just use resources to feed people who need help. And when our neighbors are facing such hard times, Pittsburgh can, should and must help feed them while working towards eliminating the larger goal of uh, or towards the larger goal of eliminating food apartheid in Pittsburgh. And we need to fund social services and nonviolent, non-police responses to emergencies to help people in need rather than police them, to criminalize them, to brutalize them. And uh, you know, we need alternatives to police that people can call for help without fear of police violence, criminalization or intimidation. A recent report from the Abolitious Law Center said that uh, found that more than 60% of the time that Pittsburgh police use force, it's against black people. Despite uh, making up 23% of the Pittsburgh population, black people, residents make up 43% of traffic stops, uh, 71% of all frisks, 69% of all warrantless searches and seizures and 63% of arrests. Worse, 83% of all warrantless searches and seizures for people ages 11 to 18. Uh, that's 83% and 100% of all warrantless searches and seizures for children 10 and under. The city in the past, uh, you know, since 2014 has spent over $7 million uh, just on settlements for lawsuits uh, brought against police for excessive force. Um, the police are not making our community safer. Police presence is unnecessary to deal with what is labeled most criminal activity. Uh, the Abolitious Law Center report stated that um, recent data has, from a handful of cities, shown that about 1% of 911 calls about violent crimes. Overall, police spend less than 4% of their time on violent crime. 80% of state criminal dosses are uh, dockets are for misdemeanors. And uh, we just can do much more to actually keep people safe if we focus on housing people, on feeding people and on responses to emergencies that are geared around helping people rather than policing them.
Thank you very much. Um, Elena Gomez, we're going to go back to her. I know that you came in and came back out, went out, came back in, hopefully on a newer version. Can you get on now?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, good morning, Council. I'm Eliana Gomez. I'm testifying today on behalf of Just Harvest, which works to um, which works towards building a justice system of food access in Allegheny County and throughout Pennsylvania. Uh, we're joining our allies today at the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council. Uh, advocates and experts who work on addressing the city's rampant hungering food insecurity and asking you to establish a food justice fund with an investment of $10 million over four years. This fund will increase our city's ability to produce food, support food businesses and workers and uplift community-led solutions to food security. This fund would support investments in projects and infrastructure that addresses root causes of hunger such as poverty and access to healthy food. Without addressing root causes, the emergency food system has to stretch to meet the needs of our city. This is an incredible, incredibly unsustainable method of addressing hunger in the region. And we have the opportunity to improve current food infrastructure to ensure that each resident, each resident in each neighborhood of Pittsburgh is food secure. Community engagement and community-led solution should be the cornerstone of the city's plans to develop a food secure Pittsburgh. Community organizations and residents have the networks and resources to understand communities' needs and the best solutions for their neighborhoods. The Food Justice Fund will allow the city to be more transparent in funding these solutions and more equitable in how much money is being given to development projects for communities in need. The fund will build collaboration with the community into the city budget so that it is commonly practiced rather than an afterthought. The Food Justice Fund would ensure that investments in food infrastructure are prioritized rather than being buried in the agendas of the URA and avenues of hope. Investments like expanding city-run farmers markets and supporting healthy corner stores in food apartheid neighborhoods and including EBT access and food bucks would increase access to fresh produce in the communities that need it most. You can make an incredible impact on food infrastructure in the city by financing food retail spaces like Salim's in the Hill, the development of the proposed food co-op in Homewood and other retail options as they arise in the future. We advocate for increased city investment in the food bucks initiative to give shoppers using SNAP benefits additional resources for purchasing fresh food for their family. The fund could also be used to help finance collective buying services for small stores that would allow them to meet distributor minimums to stock fresh produce in their shops. Finally, we recommend funding for a staff person in the mayor's office to manage and oversee the Food Justice Fund to ensure proposals are granted equitably and funds are dispersed throughout the communities um, with the most need. We look forward to working together with City Council to design equitable investments in our local food system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Sherman Gonzales, Gonzalo. Herman Gonzalo, are you with us? That brings us to John Han, 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 Henrichan. John, you're up.
Hello, yes. Hi, uh, I'm John Henrichan. I live at 434 Katoma Street in Fineview. I am an incoming member of the Board of Directors of the Fineview Citizens Council. Councilmember Wilson, hello from District One. Wednesday is the 79th anniversary of the opening of Allegheny dwellings, which is the public housing community built here in Fineview to house war workers and their families and later low-income people. It has been eight decades since our neighborhood last saw new, truly affordable housing on that transformative scale. And so in our neighborhood, as in others, the cost of a home grinds up and up. Now we could just build more public housing. That is what the moment demands, but we all know that circumstances for the time being won't allow it. So Plan B, Plan C, and so on. Here in Fineview, we are working with the City of Bridges Community Land Trust to build and renovate homes that will house our neighbors comfortably, affordably and permanently. We have to accelerate this work and we need your help to do so. We appreciate the jolt in funding for the Pittsburgh Land Bank from the American Rescue Plan. We need to see a reliable, permanent source of funding for the land bank. The URA received a one-time block of funding for community land trust work from the ARP. We need you to double it, make it permanent and ensure that the URA is working with existing CLTs to ensure success and transparency. I also saw that the URA got a one-time boost of funding to protect so-called naturally occurring affordable housing, which we have in spades here in Fineview. This must also become a permanent fixture in the budget with funds for stabilizing and rehabilitating these structures instead of demolishing them or just leaving them to rot. And then, to protect those stuck struggling to pay for market rate homes, you must allocate a significant amount for housing legal aid. Council, this will be a precursor to you moving in 2022 to finally guarantee a tenant's right to counsel in housing-related proceedings. Um, I'll also note that you heard earlier from Fineview and Perry Hilltop Citizens Council Executive Director Joanna Demming. I will echo her request for increased funding for the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for a block-by-block publicly funded sidewalk program as well as improved bike infrastructure in our neighborhoods. People do walk and bike around our hilltop neighborhoods, believe it or not. And lastly, as for where these funds might come from, I, like so many other Pittsburghers, am keeping an eye on that bloated ballooning police department budget. I can see about 120 million ways to make the math work here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Zachary Michaels. Zachary Michaels. You're muted, Zachary.
Oh, um, hey, can you hear me?
Here you now.
Um, so I'm not, uh, uh, public speaking isn't my strong suit. I basically just want to reiterate what uh, I feel like the last five or so uh, speakers have said. Um, we've heard a lot about the needs um, for housing, for food. These are really critical. Um, especially at this point, as we are, you know, hopefully in the late stages of this pandemic. Uh, we have this uh, upcoming uh, potential increase of evictions. Um, we are still dealing with uh, apartheid city um, in terms of food. Uh, and uh, you know, we've, we were all talking uh, a year or so ago about how, that report about how Pittsburgh was one of the worst cities for black people, especially black women. Um, but we really haven't seemed to have taken action about it. Uh, I really think we should defund uh, the police to the extent that we can address these problems in a more meaningful way. Um, the last time uh, we were talking about this, uh, I recall the City Council um, saying that uh, they literally couldn't uh, defund um, police for political reasons, um, which struck me as an incredibly absurd thing to say because City Council is a political body. Anything that you choose to do in terms of funding or defunding is a political decision by definition. Um, and so, uh, I, I just hope that we can finally make some progress on this. Uh, and also, please stop having these meetings on Monday mornings. Um, you know, uh, it's wonderful that so many people have been able to show up. Um, and uh, many of these are really prominent members, um, executive directors of nonprofits and, and great members of the community, but um, it's not accessible to the average people that should be speaking on these issues. Um, thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to um, Seth Sorensen.
Hello, uh, my name is Steph Sorensen and I live in Greenfield in District Five. Last year, I gave comment at this council's 2021 budget hearing, calling on you all to defund the massive police budget and use the money for social services and nonviolent alternatives to policing. Last year, myself and many, many other Pittsburgh residents pleaded with council to confront the racist state of policing in our city, where 65% of arrests are of black people, though they only make up 23% of the city's population. You assured us that defunding the police was unnecessary, that a police hiring freeze and impending retirements would reduce the number of officers and the police budget in turn. But for 2022, the police budget is slated to increase by seven and a half percent. Five new police colonel positions are being created at an expense of over $600,000 and $350,000 will go to new police recruits. That money could do so much were it not going to salaries for cops. Pittsburgh is already one of the most heavily policed of all medium-sized US cities with more than double the median number of officers per 10,000 residents. We have 34 officers per 10,000 in Pittsburgh versus 17 uh, per 10,000 in similar-sized cities. I'm calling on council not to go back on promises made last year to reinstate the police hiring freeze. The 248 officers eligible for retirement this year should retire and they should not be replaced. That would bring us closer to the average level of policing, but we'd still have many more cops per resident than other similar cities. There were 212 eviction filings last week, a number that has been rising steadily. Please fund rental assistance and help people access it, especially black women who make up the majority of applicants for assistance, but who have received help at a much lower rate than their white counterparts. Fund free legal representation for people threatened with eviction. It's shameful that this isn't already in place. The Parks and Recreation Department Food Distribution Program has rolled out incredible community food access initiatives since the pandemic began, but there is still a gap in their coverage and Pittsburghers are still going hungry. Fully fund this program to close the gap and feed everyone in need in our city. This one is particularly egregious as the department themselves has said that they only need enough funding to be able to staff a few more food distribution locations to fully meet the city's needs. Not doing so is a conscious choice this council is making to keep people in Pittsburgh hungry. I have personally lived with the stress and worry of food insecurity at different times in my life. No one should have to live like that. Please make a different choice. And finally, just like last year, I'm asking you to please make these meetings accessible for working-class people by offering more opportunities for public input and by scheduling these in the evenings and on the weekends when working people can actually attend. Further, if I'm not mistaken, it appears a full third of council members are not here listening to constituents today, including my own district representative, which is really disappointing. For those of you who are listening, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Most of us are on. Uh, Councilwoman Teresa Smith, who I did not mention earlier, is also on remotely. And so the vast majority of council is online. Um, next, Austin Dill.
Hi, everyone. My name is Austin Dill and I'm a resident of Lawrenceville. I wanted to speak to you today to voice my concerns about the proposed budget and the message its misplaced priorities send our community. Increasing the police budget will not help the residents of our city, but will actively hurt them. As many other speakers have said, Pittsburgh residents faced a host of problems that have worsened over the past few years. Food insecurity and rising rental costs are just two that could be addressed with this budget. Unfortunately, 20% of the proposed budget is going to policing. The money that could go towards these real issues is instead going to the police department, a solution in search of a problem. While crime has steadily declined in Pittsburgh, the police department has remained larger than police departments in similarly sized cities throughout the country. We now have more than twice the median number of police officers per capita than other cities our size. We now have more than twice the median number of police officers per capita than other cities our size. Frankly, what are we getting for it? Not community members that feel safer, but a police force emboldened to disproportionately harass black people, a police force that goes over budget regularly using community members' money not to help their neighbors but to arrest them. Across the country, we've had sixty years of steadily rising police budgets, but the crime statistics from the F B I itself shows that there's no correlation between increasing police budgets and lowering crime rates. I would like to see a budget that puts the needs of the community first. I would like to voice my support for continuing the police department hiring freeze to reduce the budget share of the police department and to reallocate those funds to rental assistance, affordable housing, and food distribution programs. This will be a meaningful step forward in making Pittsburgh a great place to live for all of its residents and not just the wealthy and insulated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Eric Short. Eric Short, Eric, are you with us? Right, seeing no Eric, that takes us to Anna Coleman.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Anna Coleman. I'm the environmental justice organizer at Pittsburgh United and a resident in Point Breeze. I coordinate the Our Water Campaign, a coalition of organizations and individuals working to ensure a more just and safe public water system in our region. The budget's priorities are of great interest to the progression of this work, so I'm grateful for being able to comment on the areas that are particularly important to the progression of environmental justice in our city. As others have stated, the priorities set by the budget are a manifestation of the values our city espouses. More clearly than ever, we've seen the crucial importance of investing in people's health, dignity, and well-being, such that housing investment, food justice, and other related issues ought to be the largest priority in the budget, far above investment in policing for the reasons outlined by others today, among many others. Specifically, I'll speak to the importance of funding housing investments. There's not just a need to provide more affordable housing, but new and existing housing must be safe, healthy, and energy-efficient. People need to be able to drink their water and let their children play outside without fear of lead poisoning. People need to be able to keep themselves warm and dry inside their own homes. They need to be able to keep their homes clean and mold-free without the persistent threat of basement backups. For far too many of our citizens, cities, residents, housing insecurity in the state of their housing is a threat to their all-being. Fortunately, we know the ways these issues can be fixed. We know the areas that investment can make a huge difference, namely investing in green spaces and green infrastructure to give children access to safe outdoor spaces and mitigate flooding. We know how effective air filters and mitigation of lead sources can be for improving health outcomes. Investments in the air, in these areas can address many of the racial health disparities that have plagued Pittsburgh residents for too long. The solutions exist. We just need the means by which to enact them. Additionally, these funds must have space for community input. I and others have repeated the sentiment, but it's too important of a point. Communities know what they need. This is true in regards to how health hazards in the home ought to be addressed, as well as how communities ought to be involved in this budget process. Many of the issues identified in the budgets are things that others and I spend our time working on, and there is far more expertise in the community, in the community's experiences experiencing the impacts of racial and economic injustice. Again, people know what they need, and it is a waste for this expertise to not be more central to how budget, city budget is designed, provides, and ultimately implemented. Specifically, there ought to be a means of providing input beyond two forums a year, and budget priorities ought to be shaped by a community survey. There, these are two easy steps that could immediately greatly improve this process. However, there's still room to increase community involvement even in this year's, in this year's progress, process. The city ought to provide the data necessary for citizens to hold the budget accountable to its processes. We see the money that is moving through these different priorities, but there must be a way for community members to follow up on these processes. It is one thing to say something and fully another to do it, specifically including ways to measure the success of funded projects, such as year-over-year indicators and impact, impact metrics would be hugely, hugely useful involving community members in this process. Additionally, showing detailed budget data on publicly available web platforms that provide line-by-line budget information, how funding connects to city and community priorities, and which neighborhoods funding is going to, would allow communities to use their personal experience and expertise alongside the commitment of elected officials to make our city better for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gregory Adam Norsey. You're muted, Gregory. unmute yourself, please. What'd you say? Star six, maybe? Gregory Adam Norsey. Cannot hear you. If not, we'll come back to you then. Carlos Thomas. Carlos, are you on? No. How about Pastor Latul Love Senior? Pastor, are you on?
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank God. Praise the Lord, everyone. And thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Pastor Latul Love. I'm the pastor of Praise Deliverance Church in the Great Hazelwood Community. I'm here representing the Great Hazelwood Coalition Against Racial and Ethnic Disparities, which is a coalition of grassroots organizations made up, and they, uh, made up from the residents from the Great Hazelwood area and the surrounding community, and subsidiary to another organization called Poor Law. I came here to talk about the food, but before I do, I want to say I support the comments made about the police and the funding of the police. Over five, there were four thousand stop-stopping in our neighborhood, one five two oh seven, three thousand, three thousands of stops, believe it or not, well, all from black and women. And the police continue to harass people in our community constantly, as recently as yesterday. So we're looking forward for the police to be defunded or some other effort that they curb the violence they perpetrate on black, brown people in our community. But I'm here to talk about supporting the Bugs Movement and the Food Movement of all. We're in the process right now of putting a grocery store, a cooperative grocery store in Hazelwood, determining feasibility of that. And we support Bugs and what they're doing. We just recently joined their committee and hopefully it'll become a regional committee. Everyone is working to establish food in community dealing with apartheid, which is a real issue, as earlier stated. We also support the establishment of the ten million dollar fund, but we only ask that when that fund is formed, that majority of the stakeholders on that committee to determine what that fund, the money be used, be from grassroots and community-based organization or residents that are made up of black, brown, and women, and Hispanics, people that are surely suffering. We also ask that more support be given to the Black Farmers Movement, because we believe that contrary to what many people believe, we need black, brown people who like to grow our own food and support the people with healthy food issues in our community, and asking the city to make more resources available, man, as well as funds to allow, uh, uh, more workforce developments in the area of creating food markets and food fields in a lot of the land that is vacant in that community. I greatly appreciate taking this opportunity, and we're talking fast, because I know, like you said, three minutes go fast. And I'd like to commend you guys. Yeah, I really commend, now I say guys, I mean women too. I think that you're on the right track. I think this council is going to do great things in the city. And then with our new mayor, I know that we're going to move fast and steady forward. So the Great Hazelwood Community wants to be part of that movement with our councilman, our corner, as part of, as well, and I commend him for the work he's doing with the rest of you guys. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, and God bless you and your family. Have a safe and blessed holiday.
Bless you too, my brother. That takes us to Sandra Cole.
Yes, hi. My name is Sandra Cole, and I'm a longtime resident of the Hazelwood community. And also, I have a nonprofit grassroots organization called Poor Law. It stands for people of origin rightfully loved and wanted. And I am in support of Sister Queen as well. Hazelwood as well as Homewood have been a food desert for many years now before nineteen ninety-five. And at one point, we had three grocery stores in our community. So I would ask that the vote do go to the ten million dollars of support of funds that we would need to continue to do the work that we are doing in our community as grassroots organization. Again, I've been in this community for over forty years, and we know what we need, you know? And I believe that it's that time now for real change. And I believe that you guys who sit and are able to make those decisions also know that is, it's that time for real change. So I'm asking for the support, for you guys to the support, to tell me your ten million dollars to help the food apartheid. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us now to, let me recite registered speakers who were not on at the moment I called their name. And so that, and clerk will help me. I have Charmaine Moy. Is she on? No Charmaine Moy. Maria Cohen, are you on? Sher- Sherman Gonzalo? Eric Short? I think that's everyone. Did I skip anyone? Gregory Norsey?
Uh, hi, can you hear me this time?
Yes, I can hear you this time. Thank you, Gregory.
So sorry for that. I had it open in Firefox, and I was having trouble clicking the permissions dialogue. Good morning. My name is Gregory Adam Norsey. I am an anti-fascist computer hacker living in Squirrel Hill. Thank you to those city council members who chose to attend this city council meeting. I don't like speaking directly to politicians, but today I'm going to make an exception. I attended Upper Saint Clair High School, class of two thousand and six, Go Big or Go Home, and I grew up in Scott Township before that, where I was an altar server in Our Lady of Grace's first mixed-gender altar-serving class. Later, I went on to get my bachelor's. This is going too long. Sorry, I didn't realize we'd take this too long to speak. During the G twenty, I saw some really severe police violence when I was simply trying to go about my day as a student. And the things I saw and heard since then have ignited a fire in me I have not felt since the Bush administration, which inspired me to spend a decade learning to evade the panopticon after I saw their armed agents assault my fellow citizens. Ten years later, we were able to evade police violence and advocate for Pittsburgh's first black mayor through the use of strong privacy-enhancing technologies to organize peaceful activism and evade police violence. I urge you, in the strongest possible terms, to extend the police, Pittsburgh Police Hiring Freeze. I also urge you, fund nonviolent alternatives like therapy, drug treatment, and jobs training and education rather than reactive measures like police patrols. Please find affordable housing, rental assistance, and ensure that free legal representation is given to anyone facing an eviction in this city. Please also schedule these meetings at a time when working-class people can attend them and make their voices heard. And finally, please never again gaslight the city by making a specific promise like a hiring freeze and then failing to follow through. We are not friends. We are not partners. We are citizens who deserve accurate truthful statements from our elected officials. Have a wonderful day.
Hey, thank you. That now exhausts our registered speakers. Are there other people who are on that need to be given one minute? And I, you'll have to help me, Madam Clerk, if there are others. No? All right, that exhausts our list of speakers. That now opens it up to members of council. Anyone want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to thank the callers for starters. Excuse me. Pastor Latul, I really enjoyed hearing him. I love that he has confidence in this council. I do as well. I do look forward to the next two to four years at least, working with the same council. Uh, overriding message I keep hearing, and you know, if we dropped the ball anywhere when we were designating the ARPA funds, I feel was with food security, and we hear it here today. I've heard it on the street. I wish we could do a little more with that, hopefully, before we vote on the line item. But, uh, but I agree with all of those callers, and there's so many different avenues, so many different ways you could put money into food security and things we can do to help others. So I think we dropped the ball with that, and if I found the budget or the ARPA fund allocations mostly responsible. You know, I know there was a lot made of, you know, the different amounts that went to different places, but again, if I feel like we came up short, that was the only place, and I hope we can do with something with that. So thanks to the callers.
Other members. That's woman gross.
Thank you, Mr. Coghill. Thank you also to the people who called in. I, um, I support the call for a food justice fund. I do think that the ARPA allocations were then and still are intended for COVID relief. That's in the federal legislation. It's listed on the federal website. Go to the Treasury website. But I want to note that while we have stark food need today, and our own Parks and Rec, as was mentioned, did a really great job of reconfiguring itself and doing food distributions for people to have at home, both for children and especially for seniors. We can do more, and we heard that testimony last budget season and this budget season. And I really support that learning lesson that we've done during COVID, right? That we can allow, we can send food home to people so that all of their household is able to, to be fed. And we, we've learned that lesson. We didn't do that before COVID. It's a really important point that we weren't, before COVID, we were not sending meals home with people. And it has made a critical distant difference in those hungry households. But I also heard the caller say it isn't, that isn't enough. So it's important, and we should do more, but that is not everything. What I hear is people calling for food secure communities. They actually want to see us support and uplift what they're already trying to do in the grassroots way, the cooperative grocery stores, the cooperative gardens, the expansion of all sorts of food businesses that are local businesses. This council has supported many calls for action to help support our local businesses, including many of us have called for making our own permits, licenses, and inspections more small-business friendly. We've felt that pain, that we've, are too often the obstacle instead of the assistance. And I think this is not incompatible. This is actually overlapping policy. So as I spoke to last week, some members heard me say this last week in session. I'm also going to be asking the U R A to look backwards for its last few years of the kinds of technical assistance, grants, loans. What kinds of support do they do that is already to the food system? So that we can know what it is, we can assess how it's working, we can see whether it's reaching the right people, the right communities, or where we need to do better. And so we all have that same information in front of us, the community and the members, and we can, and we can try to fill any gaps or expand and uplift what's working and do better. And that's what I keep hearing is both the problems with the healthy food priority areas. We've already had the studies. We know where there is a lack of food systems in neighborhoods, so they are food deserts. We have really excellent policy suggestions from the work of the Food Policy Council and our own city planning department. And we just need to fund it. So I'll be working with members. We have some meetings actually today. And I'll be working with members to see if we can, if we could start pulling together these funds. Thank you.
Other members. Russell.
I thank all the speakers for taking their time out of their day to come. Now, I think it's critical for the public to provide input, and I just want to take that opportunity to thank them. Looking forward to the next, well, today, and then I believe we have a little, little extra time to do some amendments, and hopefully we can address these concerns. Thanks.
Thank you. Other members. Um, so I think that.
A few comments when you're done, please.
You can go, you can go now, Madam President, or you can go now.
No, go ahead. I'll go after you.
All right, um, I, um, first of all, we thank citizens for participating. We, as a council, hope. We, as a council, hope next year to enlarge and expand this process of citizen participation, both not just in the budget process, but ongoingly. We hope to have a more robust public participation process with council. One of the things, though, that, and I am, you know, I've always been supportive of food issues. The first ministry at the church when I came in 1984 was a food bank. My wife and I have spent the last 30 years in various ways doing food distribution, although we don't talk about it. Not just the food bank. We've served dinners to highrises, going back to the, you know, early, late 80s, early 90s. We've done Thanksgiving. We did not do it the last two years because of COVID. But on Thanksgiving, our church has sponsored a dinner, sending dinners to highrises and serve around 300 in the Homewood area. So we've been doing food stuff all of our ministry, and we are supportive. One of the things, though, that I will, we have to think through is that most of our city dollars are reimbursable. And the problem with that is that that causes an undue bearer burden on grassroots organizations, because most of the time, they do not have the resources to spend the money on the front end and wait for the time to get reimbursed. And so I think that we have time, because I think that we're going to, my expectation is that will be another round of budget concerns in the new year with the new administration. And so we have time in that time to kind of address these food issues, knowing that it is not a primary function of city government, but a primary function of county government. That is, their primary function is not our primary function locally, but we can give some support. But I am concerned that giving money to a fund without a vehicle to provide them the grassroots organizations, that money will not go to local people on the ground doing the work. Rather, it will go to larger advocacy agencies who have the fiscal wherewithal to receive these funds, and I think there's a disconnect. And so before I'm ready, let's just put money to organizations. I have to be assured that the people who actually say they want this funding, the local, especially for, you know, the African-American participation people who I've talked to and saw their work, that there is a direct way of funding their work. And so that's a concern. And so, again, we thank everyone for coming. I do think that, and the last thing I'll say is, I will be not in favor in any way of, until the next administration comes, of touching the ARP money. I think that should occur. If we're going to reallocate those fundings, it should be done in a holistic way with the support and the coordination and participation of our incoming mayor. That's sort of my perspective on it. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Reverend, and I apologize for not being there in person. As you know, I was having some, my children were having childcare issues today, like a lot of America. But I just want to say that I hear all the comments about the food groups. And I think that one way that we can fund them is by putting in the community gardens, the urban farms that we talked about, that we legislated for each council district. I think it's great that we have organizations willing to help people, but it'd be great for people not to have to depend on other people all the time, because it doesn't make you feel great to have to do that. So I think it would be helpful to our residents to empower them by getting their own food and having their own thing. But at the same time, we could also pay these organizations that are doing a lot of work and are helping our communities to help maintain the farms and to help organize and bring things in that we need to have bought in, and to organize volunteers. So there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of ways that we can engage the groups. I think we have to think it through. I think putting in place a plan on how we're going to get the dollars to the groups, I think, as you mentioned, is really important. But as you know, I do, I'm very supportive of making sure that we help the groups that have helped us get through a pandemic. But I also am very concerned that we don't just give to anybody, but that we look into the nonprofits that are applying for funding. But I also think you and Councilwoman Gross, both mentioned that there are some issues with the URA giving a lot of, a lot of the loans to small businesses. But I think that's part of the problem, because if you have the money to get a loan and to pay a loan, you don't really need the URA. You can get it from a lot of places. What the URA needs to do is look into, and I know that they frown upon this, but some grant funding, just to help start up some of the business. I know for one, Ebony Lunsford in our district does an amazing job. She teaches kids how to garden and how to use the produce to make healthy meals, and she does amazing things. But for her to get another loan, it would be ridiculous. I mean, it would put her under. She needs help in other ways. And the URA and the city have been amazing, and she'll tell you, they've been very helpful. But she needs the kind of help that we don't have in place now. And I think that's some of the things that we need to look further into. But so I'm supportive of the hunger groups and whatever I need to do to be supportive. I'd really love to work on that with every member that wants to do that. And I thank Councilwoman Gross for leading that charge, the task force. But I also think, I've heard a lot of comments about defunding the police, which I think everybody knows. My concern is not defunding the police. My concern is making sure we're hiring and we're screening in the hiring process officers that understand the value of our residents. And so with that said, I'm not supportive of that at all, but I am supportive of hiring quality people. And that's it for me, but I'm willing to work with council members. And I do think that we will schedule when we open the budget again. I'm sure we'll schedule additional meetings. And I do want the idea of having an evening or weekend meeting, so maybe both. So thank you, everyone. Thank you for all the members who were there. And thank you to all the people who came out to participate and talked and addressed council and for all the emails that were received. We appreciate your feedback. We really do. Thank you.
Any other member online? If not, any other things, any other conversation for members? If not, I'll entertain a motion to dismiss this public hearing.
So may...
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, we are adjourned.